Thank you all for joining us tonight. Do we have any comments for the public regarding items that are not on our agenda? All right. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? David, do you have anything for us?
No.
Board members, any amendments to our agenda? All right. How effective we are. Isaiah emailed us a little while ago. It is exam week and he is doing a good job saying he needs to study and make sure he does a good job, so we are in some ways happy that he's absent tonight, making sure he's doing that work. David, any announcements you would like to bring to our attention?
Yep. So, a couple I would like to highlight. So, on the 18th, I will be bringing forward some added information, expected information on the Rebel name identifiers. I just want to make that clear again. There was some specific things that the board had outlined when that was decided on some time ago, so I'll be updating you on that. Also, consistent with information that we had heard from some of our parents, from Rick Markod and maybe other schools, I'll be giving you an update on the class size, kind of where we are to date, and obviously, some components of what we're proposing in the budget to help respond to that. Also, Steering Committee meeting, remember that's on January 24th at 7:00 at the city municipal offices. And then lastly, and we'll keep you posted on this, but we got message from Kevin Dorn today, Delana and I did, about thinking about legislative breakfast either on the 6th or the 13th of February. So, we'll send something out on how that would work. That, again, is typically 7:30 start, goes for about an hour solidly, maybe into the 9:00 hour maximum kind of thing. Also, I think we should talk about maybe items and issues that we might want to be bringing up. Certainly, I have a few, but there may be some things specific to your work and your observations that you'd like to see.
For the legislative breakfast?
That's right.
And as well, do we have a, we have not had a conversation about the Steering Committee agenda items yet as well, correct?
We have not, and I might need to start a little bit with you folks and also then with Kevin and Helen, you and I.
Right. So, why don't we, if Delana can send out the possible dates for the legislative breakfast and also include a question to the board members about agenda items for the, possible agenda items for the Steering Committee meeting to trigger that, and then we can get together with Helen and Kevin and finalize things.
Yep.
Perfect. Any other announcements from board members? All right. Item six, set announced tuition for FY 18.
So, that's in your packet. And I want to just, a little bit of a disclaimer, we think that this is close, or I should say, correct. It does have, obviously, calculations that are specific to the budget. There is, by law, by the 15th of January, we need to adopt this, so I think it's important that we do it. If we need to amend it slightly, we can certainly bring it back at a future date and do so. The calculation, and again, John can go into a lot more detail, but the calculation of the amounts often look fairly close to what you see as in the equal, you know, in your budget worksheet information. That's not the case. Sometimes it's coincidental that there's a lot that goes into the calculation of this particular area. And again, the business office, John and Amity, have been doing this, Amity for quite some time. So, this is where we are. I would say we have a little bit on the secondary rate, the enrollment numbers don't necessarily jive with the data, so there's some, 180 actually should be 183, but again, the general gist here is go with the earlier information than this.
I don't think we have.
Yeah.
But low for our board members.
It should be. It didn't.
I think it came email. Yeah, I had seen, I saw it over email. I don't happen to have it in front of me, but yes, I did read it over email.
What we can do then is...
I'm looking at David, so you guys will just have to guess.
I want to share that one.
I apologize. No wonder you guys were staring at me. How much more is this than last year?
The current rate is 15,000.
Oh, I didn't get that far. It's all right. Reading, you know.
Do you need action, David?
Yes.
So, I would make a motion that we accept the announced tuition rate for FY 2018 as proposed by administration and the finance office with a provision to modify it slightly as needed prior to the 1-15 deadline.
I second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any more conversation or questions?
Okay, just one second. Dan, go ahead. Martin?
Yeah, I mean, just how big of a change does, can the administration make from this?
Based on the way the motion was framed?
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, we can't, we can't, I mean, it's a calculation, so we...
Okay.
It's a calculation, so we would bring back the calculation difference depending on where we end up with a final budget.
Right, gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Sir?
Now, my question relates to the special education rate. Can someone speak to why such a profound decrease in the rate?
David and John?
I don't think I could explain that. I'm wondering if Joanne could help with that one? I don't know. This is also a computed rate based on the cost of programs divided by the number of expected kids.
Yes, but it must have been higher than in the past. The rate came down, so my question is what changed year to year?
I can't answer that question.
We can certainly, we could, we can get that information to you.
Get that for you, but I don't know it off the top of my head. Amity's the actual one that does this.
Does that have something to do with the population that's going to be coming to the school?
Absolutely.
As opposed to based on our current population? Is that correct?
Well, rate wouldn't seem to be based on population.
Well, not the, you know, I mean the makeup of it.
Utilization.
You know, the utilization, who we have in our student body.
Run rate.
How many people need the special education services? I assume this is a projection of what we have coming, not what we have seen, but I'm speculating, so let's get an actual answer.
Is it, is it a big enough decrease that it concerns the administration that there might be a miscalculation?
I just wonder if I could speak to this. Because I am unsure, I'm just not thinking that we need to be announcing the tuition rate for special education. I know that's been a practice.
I think by law, we have to, Joanne. I think by law, we have to announce it even though it's not really applicable, I mean...
It's an excess cost calculation, but maybe I'm wrong, so.
So, is this...
So, I'm not, I didn't...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, is this in addition to the secondary and elementary amounts? That's like the 15,748 plus? Did I also not read that? No, no, I mean, do you add the $14,111 to...
To the 14,004, for example?
To the, yeah.
For a particular individual?
My understanding, we bill back excess costs for special education.
So, it's excess, right.
And that's how I typically calculate that. I'm not, I'm unsure what this is on this sheet, but I didn't think we had to announce it, so that's...
We've always had to do it this way. I don't, I don't believe that that particular amount is actively used, but it's part of the law that we're required to do. So, again, as Joanne says, excess spending, we bill back, we have extraordinary costs that we bill back, and we do that based on, you know, the actual services that are being used, right? That's how we do that.
Is it possible to table the motion until next week? Do we have to have this vote tonight?
Well, we, I... I would like that you do this and you can make, you can amend your motion to give you some additional information specific to the special education.
So, I will amend my original motion to approve the announced tuition rates, again, with those provisions, but to provide clarification to the board on the special ed excess rate.
I have an amendment to a motion. Do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion on the amendment? We'll vote on the amendment first, so we have to. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion is now amended. Any more discussion on the standing motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes as amended.
Okay, I'll get that too.
School board line item program budget, we have more, we have for action tonight as well.
Mm-hmm. So, a question.
Yes, sir.
When's, when's the last time that school board members got a little increase in their stipend?
Way too long.
I know that three years ago, as some sort of show of something, we gave up the stipend for the year.
You did.
I feel I owed that back. Poor kids didn't get any gifts that year for Christmas. But no, it's been, I think, probably four years or so since there's been any increase in that.
Again, part of this could be that you put some sort of, you know, a recommendation to me on putting an escalator in or cost of, you know, something, some sort of an increase.
We don't want to get crazy with an escalator.
No, no, we don't need an escalator.
But the problem is if you don't, again, it comes to you guys and you don't, you know, I can put something in on your behalf always, but that's part of the conversation, you know? And we gave, I give this to you, but I know that it doesn't fall, you know, on your active eyes often around advocating for the work that you all do.
Well, I would say as a board member that will not be here, I would support an increase to that. I mean, I would, I would like to make it as feasible as possible for everyone in the community to potentially run for school board. And so, if we can do a little something there to make it easier for those that, that's more of a challenge, I think I would be in favor of that.
It's for paying, it could be for paying childcare, you know, the mileage, et cetera. I mean, it barely covers...
Not much childcare.
Yeah, well, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't even cover the expense of being on the school board, frankly.
No, no, but I think a little bit of a token increase to, I would be supportive of, I don't know if there's any other discussion on this.
I agree.
Well, what does that mean, though?
How would that work from a protocol perspective? Would the board need to vote on something like that to make a change? I mean, you could do the budget, we can do the budget things, but the actual change would probably require other action, I would imagine.
No, I think you plug it in there, tell us what you want, we'll make the change. We'll, and I think then, you know, obviously, the electorate votes on it. I mean, the whole, they're voting on the whole package, so it's fine. We just, we need to get it, this is currently what's in the budget. We'll have to make slight modification of that, but it's reasonable.
Okay. May I? I mean, I would suggest $250 because it hasn't changed in four or five years. Be essentially $50 more per year over the kind of...
Total, adding to that.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd want to make sure that whatever the protocol is to change the salary of the board is appropriately followed after the budget's approved, if there's an action item that the board would need to take.
I think you make the recommendation, the board approves, and then the electorate is your decision maker, like with everything else. Then there's transparency through open meeting that this has been done.
All right. Other questions on the budget?
Well, the petitions are going to be swamping in for the two open spots.
That's right, we'll be able to stop them now.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So, you have it. Yeah, so other questions on the board's budget? Or comments? So, I think we've, one thing that I would, I'm assuming this is correct, when we look at the equipment line, that is for the board software that we've been talking about.
Yep.
I would expect probably not necessarily as much in year one, but I'm assuming paper and postage would reduce a little bit once you adopted that and some of the paper mailings and the paper documents stop. But I would leave it alone for now.
Yeah, we probably would still have some, you know, for the public unless we can figure out a better way to do that, but I don't, you know, I think we'll still have to have some for the public, at least critical documents.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think it would just be reduced by whatever it's costing you to mail and print now.
Yep.
I did have a couple of questions. One was almost just a curiosity question. What is an overtime salaries?
It's for Delana and Meg.
Okay, okay. And then, purchase services, I think we talked about this last time, but there's $75,000 in another part of the budget for a facilities assessment, but then, at the very end of the meeting last week, the question was asked where the money is coming for the Chamberlain assessment and any other master planning and visioning things, because master planning and visioning is still carrying forward. I mean, we're not looking at Whitenburg or, you know, any giant expenses like that, but we're still going to have to do some work, and I just felt like cutting $20,000 out of that budget seemed like a lot to take out, given the work that we have before us for the next year.
So, we think we have, regarding the Chamberlain, at least the sound study component specific to the master planning follow-up, we have money currently in there. We've gotten some estimates on what that might cost. Our hope is to collaborate strongly with the city. If they're going to be doing something like that, then our hope would be that we wouldn't have to have the same, you know, high level expense. So, we think we're in pretty good shape with where we're at currently, and we have that money. John, I don't know that amount of money that we talked about, where do we have that? Do we put it facilities or...
Well, there's $75,000 in the stewardship plan under the budget initiatives.
Right, right, which are more specific to the high, middle.
Yeah.
And I know that the fee was, you know, it wasn't extreme.
It was fairly modest from what we talked about.
So, it's in there, Bridget? I mean, we have money in there to continue that, to continue the, or I'll say, do that, do that study.
Just not listed in this particular budget.
Right. I think to Bridget's point, is it, is it not there at all? Is it going to be lost in our continuation? So, no, we stand committed to making sure that that can be done, so we have solicited information from folks that do that work, and we have that money there.
Any other questions from the board on the board's budget?
Last one I have is on advertising and marketing. I was wondering why it's going up. I would think that intuitively it would go down since we, from my perspective, we're likely to have fewer community meetings to advertise and, you know, fewer of those types of things this year, but I just wondered why that was...
But we advertise for the budget and...
That's in the run rate, too.
Right. It was increasing, and I just didn't understand why it was increasing. It's a tiny amount, but, you know.
The reason I did that was because of the actual, last year was 5488 against a budget of 4,000. I thought it warranted increasing to 5,500.
It's increased.
But I just wondered if that a lot, I don't, I just didn't know if that had to do more with master planning and visioning that we were doing last year and things, or where that came from. Not a big deal, but it was just a question, yeah.
Looking at the previous year.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it...
Other questions or guidance that we would give, David, beyond the guidance we've just given him?
No.
Okay. So, this was one for action. We've asked for one suggested change. What action do you need from us?
I think, you know, you can do it next time. Again, depending on where you're at, or you could make the modifications and the changes and adopt it as such, but, I mean, probably would like to see the bottom line.
Would the board like to adopt this, knowing that we've asked them to make that one $250 change, move it off our agenda for next time? I would need a motion as such.
So, moved.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. This other thing that I think we have to talk about is the school district budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that about the same size as this one, or is it at all different?
Yes, Mr. LeDoux.
All right, sir.
So, by your place, there's a few, there's three other documents that are in addition to your packet. So, let me just call those out before we get going. So, one is this budget initiative with the color sides on the left, which is exactly, there's no content change. The only thing that was added is on the far right side, we put a page number on the far right side of the handout at your place one. You following me? What we didn't want to do is if we call an item out, we want to make sure that the page, you can refer it back to your packet on the page number, because some of the numbers are now out of order, so you'd be searching.
Right. So, these are all the item threes?
Right.
Very threes.
That's correct, and those are the budget initiatives. In addition, we've also, and we're going to go over this in just a moment, we've given you a handout on the tax presentation alternatives, this particular sheet. Because of the home value changes, we wanted to be transparent about what those changes represent and the calculations and what that means. And then the other one is, based on the staffing budget initiatives and the current staffing, we've given you the staffing information as well. Questions on that?
I don't know if this got covered on the fourth, but did we do the graph of staff versus enrollment?
I have not done that for the board yet, Elizabeth, I have not.
That would be something I would like to see.
Including the tuition. Yeah.
Okay, do you want to...
Yep, so...
How do you want to proceed?
So, what I'd like to do, first of all, let me just start out with some basic premises, probably repetitive again, but the budget that we're talking about tonight, which is the FY 17, 18 budget, is, obviously, has a progression that has happened since October to where we are today. It is one for action, but it's likely you'll have questions and maybe some articulation changes, and it is also one for action on the 18th. How did we arrive at this budget? Obviously, we've had significant input from you, the board, questions. Obviously, we've had information and questions from the administration on many occasions. The inputs that have been used, obviously, is our facility stewardship plan, which is a document that helps guide the work that we need to do at the buildings, as well as our district initiatives associated with our MTSS work, as well as student assessment and our long-range plan. Clearly, our budget advisory group has also played an important role. They've had now six meetings, and actually, they're here tonight, so I'll just say to Casey Shea, Casey, Diane Bugby, Dan Fleming, and Charlie Jones. So, again, thanks for their help, and they have been extremely helpful in its fault, it's, the way in the sequences happened has been great because we've had kind of budget advisory, administrative meetings, school board. It's been, it's been a really nice flow for us, so that we've been able to use that. So, again, and then I think right back, right back at you, we've continued that feedback from you. So, that's kind of been the loop, and obviously, we feel like we're close to a place here where we have some synergy happening. So, what I want to do is walk you through the packet. We're going to start out with the very first sheet, which is information on the budget worksheet, again, a document now you've all probably become comfortable with. And I want to just ask John to just highlight a few of those things. For some of you, you'll, you'll see that not a lot has changed, but again, I don't want to, I don't want to assume that. So, John?
Yeah, I think I'm going to try to do this from the packet sheets rather than using the overhead at this point, but if there's questions, I'll, I'll take it to the overhead. But the, this version is, say, version seven. We've continued to refine this as we've gone along. For those that have been here before, it's going to be repeat here, but want to make sure we're all on the same page. The top of this budget workshop shows the preliminary baseline budget, 49,413,820, which represents the cost of moving the existing programs into next year. A steady-as-you-go budget, simply moving everything forward another year. We really did want to present some alternatives that would move the district further along, so we spent quite a lot of time in the fall generating the list of initiatives that we've talked about last time and the time before, and we spent more time in the last two weeks refining and changing those numbers, so that the list of budget initiatives adds that we would, we'll be talking about shortly, total 1,384,299. During the process, we've reduced various parts of the budget by 156,635, and the adjusted expenditure budget proposal at this point in time stands at 50,641,284. The original push-forward budget had a revenue side budget of 11,891,825, increase of about $1,003, primarily tuition income and special ed expense reimbursement numbers. Along with the budget initiatives, there were some offsets. Those totaled 189,872 in terms of revenue items, so that the adjusted revenue budget now stands at 12,81,697, and that results in the net state education fund of 38,559,787. We take that number, divide it by the number of equalized pupils, 2,416,53, to arrive at the cost per equalized pupil of 15,956,68. Divide that by the so-called yield amount of 10,076, results in a tax rate, an equalized tax rate of $1,583.6. We do now know the CLA that declined in late December from 96.27% to 95.98%, so if we divide the $1,583.6 by 95.98%, we get a tax rate, a residential tax rate that would print on the bills of $1.65. That number is a 2.37% increase over the current year's rate of $1,611.7. The non-residential tax rate is not based on the equalized cost per equalized pupil, but simply a statewide ed tax rate for non-residential property of $1.55, divided again by the CLA, results in $1,614.9, or a 1.28% increase in the estimated tax rate. Those numbers, while we have real numbers from the state for all of those now, the state can change and has in the past years changed some of those somewhat during the process, so we can't, you know, rely with certainty with these numbers. Well, we think they're pretty close. I do want to highlight an issue that's come up this time, that's the tax on a typical home. If you move to the right-hand side of the whole tax rate calculation, it says tax on a $366,000 home, $6,039, and the change in that from the prior year, from the current year, is $140. Tax on a $226,000 condo, the average condo price presumably, $3,729, an increase of $86. We got, we got notice from the city a couple of weeks ago that the average condo value and the average house value had changed. As footnote six on this sheet says, the average home value now stands at 335,839, about a $30,000 decrease from last year's average home value. The average condo value now stands at 227,647, an increase of about $1,600. So, our question is, you know, how are we going to compare this from one year to the next? Should we continue to use the $366,000 average house price and the $226,000 condo price? If you do, you're going to end up with a tax decrease for the average home, even though we know the rate is going up. Do you want to base both years on the 335,000 last year and this year, even though the last year price was 366, or how do you want to handle this? So, I did prepare a sheet that's the, David mentioned it, the tax presentation alternatives sheet, and we just bring this up in the interest of transparency to say we do have a choice here as to how we're going to present this.
John, can I pause just for a second?
Sure.
So one of the things that we do is we know that it's important to be consistent with the city, so I expect that will be one of your questions that you'll ask us, so we're currently looking at, and John has been in contact with Tom Hubbard around what we're going to do. We think it's important to be consistent, we can influence them a little bit, too. My desire, we initially had, John had the new average in there. I felt that it was appropriate at this point to have the same, because people are going to look at the previous year budget book, if you will, and look at this one, and have some sort of a measurement. So one, the other thing we can do, certainly in our budget questions, is we can, we could put this information in there, but it may be a little bit confusing. So it's back to you, really, for your feedback, and we will, you know, obviously, your information and feedback around how to do that will communicate with the city. But John, again, as he said, he's put together kind of the three different versions, based on the footnotes, six and seven on the worksheet.
This carries a high-profile spot in the budget book, it's right on the inside cover of the budget book, and we want to make sure it's fair. And so I have laid out here three options. The first, I would actually suggest, uses the new number, three thirty-five eight thirty-nine for both last year's tax, even though we didn't use that number last year, and this year's tax. That shows a change in the tax paid of a hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the house and eighty-seven dollars for the condo. The other alternative is to use the three-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-dollar for last year, as it was printed in the budget book, and for this year. That would show a change in the tax of a hundred and forty dollars for the house and eighty-seven dollars again for the condo. Or you could do this, but I wouldn't, I don't know, as I champion it, use the three-sixty-six from last year's budget book as last year's average house value with last year's tax rate, and then the three thirty-five from the average home value this year with the dollar sixty-five estimated tax rate for this year. That shows a tax savings of three-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, and with the condo, a hundred and fourteen dollars increase. I have corresponded a bit with Tom about this, and I think he's leaning, the city side, leaning towards option A. I think whatever we do, we should do the same thing. So we just wanted to alert you that that's a little wrinkle that.
What will actually show up on a tax bill?
Well, you'll have your own property tax.
But I think people are, because I think, I don't think people look backwards to see what the trend is. I think they want to know on a hundred thousand dollars of value, what am I going to pay?
Right, right.
So wouldn't, would that be the C option?
Yeah, the hundred thousand dollar number is also shown in the budget book. I didn't put it here, because it doesn't change in either event, so you'll still have the hundred thousand dollar option, and you can multiply that times two, three, or four, depending on how valuable your property is. But that was just a wrinkle that we thought we ought to alert.
I think by not identifying it, not talking about it, it could come across deceptive and changing, you know, changing that number.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just want to, would want to know which scenario represents the tax bill a homeowner would see?
All of them.
Yeah, they all do.
All do.
Well, C doesn't really. I think A or B would.
No, that the calculation on the tax bill is not going to change, it's just how you're articulating.
But it looks like you've got a reduction in taxes.
I don't think C is anywhere near.
And that was my question, is does, does this change in CLA? Because then I would just put a footnote, an asterisk, that the CLA impacted, but a change in CLA will not impact the tax bill.
That's right, because your home value is based on, unless your assessment has changed, you're, you're going to, your assessment hasn't changed, and that's really kind of, the big issue is, regardless of what the average home sales is, it's going to be based on your assessed value, and your assessed value isn't, you know, could have changed, but that's not something we control.
I would vote for A, and add, that adds a one-hundred-thousand dollars of value line.
Yeah, so I can see it.
That makes it very simple.
Good. Again, I didn't, we didn't want to not call it out as a change, because likely our folks would, you know, see that. Okay? So we'll make that change.
So that's, that's that piece, and the, we're planning to spend a lot of time here, again, talking about the budget initiatives piece, and what we've done this time is, is giving you a summary of those initiatives that I think is all on one page, that is hopefully easy to digest and compare. We've grouped them a little bit differently, based on mandates or learning initiatives or academic programming, and summarized them that way, and then given the percent of the total change that we're looking at as well. And then we've also given the detailed sheets, as we've amended it several times during this process, so that we can get into, drill down into some more detail on each one of those items. So that's where I think we're going to go next.
So I want to be clear here, I mean, this is, this is where it can start to get complicated, and I don't, I would like to try to not be complicated. Again, as John indicated, we've divided these out into what we think are important notable categories, from mandates to learning initiatives, academic programming, master planning, contingency and other costs. Remember, out of the gate was the five-point-one-nine percent move-forward budget, which entailed what we would say dollars that right out of the gate needed to be added, or FTEs that needed to be added. So that five-point-one-nine percent right out of the gate encompasses that, plus it encompasses the stewardship work needed, all right? Moving forward, the last time you saw this at, on the, on the January fourth, same format, those, we had some priorities identified that carry, that carried forward. On the new initiative sheet, you have the item number and page number, and obviously, those are, these are the reflected changes. What I'd like to do is go down this right side for you and just allow you to see what, just get an idea of what we've done differently. Does that make sense? Because whether we've added or we've reduced, I think it's important for you to know that. So again, what I'm doing here is tying the fourth, the January fourth meeting, to the current initiative meeting. So I'm going to start right at the top, Act one sixty-six, the preschool coordination, was in at a one-oh. It's changed a little bit in its title, because it's more administrative support work, it's been reduced to point five. That's item thirteen, that's the very top one on the, under mandates. Are you following me? If you continue on that, in that same, no change to item thirty-two. Item five, which is the third one, flexible pathways, business partnership, CDC, that's, we've changed, that amount changes from a one-point-oh to a point-eight-three, based on some moving, the moving of staff. The next one down, item nineteen, which is general education para, again, through communication and collaboration with a high school particularly, that can be reduced from two to one. So it was initially at two. No other changes in that category, in that, in the mandates. What we've also done, John's added, is the total amount of money in that particular initiative, and the percentage amount for the entire increase. Moving on to learning initiatives, the first three items, the pilot program, looking at student behavior and trauma, the autism, and the elementary special educator, those are all added. Those were not in there before.
On January fourth, they were?
That was the January fourth, they were not.
They were in there.
Some of them were actually reduced.
Yeah, reduced.
You can check that for me, I think they were, I think they were added. The elementary activity bus is still there, but we changed it from local funding to schools-out funding. Again, schools-out is an enterprise fund, and we think this is a strong correlation to that program, so we're showing it, but no dollars. The robotics is an, is added back, is added from your previous.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's what their priority was. Some of them were listed as ones last time.
Right, so these are.
The ones hadn't been.
We're only talking about threes, Stuart, so they're.
No, 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 but that's what I'm saying.
On January fourth, they were ones.
They were ones.
Moved them to threes, which is why they're on the list now.
That's correct, and so that's why I'm saying they're added.
Gotcha.
Thanks. That's all that there is in that learning initiative block. Moving down to the academic programming, the orchard classroom was reduced from two to one, with one going into contingency. So there's really no net change, because you'll see under the contingency, under the red, the red block, you'll see that the contingency was added, and that's really represented as a move. You follow me?
Yep.
The idea there, just to game, give you some information, we will continue to watch enrollment trends, we've added a teacher to Rick Markcott, we've added a teacher at Orchard, and we've put one additional in contingency, based on feedback that we've received from, from you folks. That's, that's the end of any changes in the academic programming block. Under master planning and visioning, under item thirty-three, centralized administrative office space, that has been added as a priority three. The administrator has also been added, and the district communication coordinator has been added, but at fifty percent. That's all in that block, and then as I already said about the contingency, that was representative of the above. In addition to that information, you can also see, based on the bottom or the subtotals of that initiative sheet, you can see the staffing needs, and you can see the sixteen-point-two-three, and then on the sheet that was an added sheet for the, for tonight, this one, you can see that it is also represented there with the initiatives, plus recommended initiatives, so you can see that data. Again, as Elizabeth alluded earlier, some enrollment trend data connected to FTE data is still owed to you. Make note of that. So I'm going to, I'm going to pause there. I think if there's specific items, as you look through that list, that you'd like more detail on now, that maybe you did not have, again, it is included in your initiative, and it, it does allow you to go to the item number or the page number to look at that. But I'm, I'm going to pause and let you ask me some questions, specific to any one of those, and again, Stuart, myself, Joanne, and John are available to help answer some of those questions.
Okay, thank you, David. Questions from the board, we'll start with, and then we'll look to the public.
Yeah, if I can clarify, since I wasn't here at the fourth, so these initiatives represent those that were the highest first-year priorities?
Correct.
And the categorization, is there any priority associated with the categorization?
We categorize them as threes, Elizabeth, and.
But between, for instance, learning and academic program.
We did not, in other words, if we had to, you know, rank, rank the blocks as number ones and twos, we did not do that.
So there's no, there's no particular order to this?
No, we just, we saw this as, you know, an important move forward for the district around mandates, learning initiatives, academic programming, master planning, et cetera. We saw those as important, kind of the buckets that we've been working on to move the district.
And this may be redundant, but what were, what were the FTE adds in last year's, from last year?
In the budgeted last year, or in the actual where we are today?
Through the year.
Um.
Like eleven?
Like eleven something?
Eleven point seven.
No, yeah, that's low.
It was thirteen.
I think it was about seventeen.
It's seventeen point eight, isn't it?
Well, I don't think that's what Elizabeth is asking, though.
Oh, is it on the?
The sheet that was in front of me. So my understanding is our budget last year to what our actual was. We added seventeen point eight total.
Right, is that your question?
Yeah, this is where the.
I thought you were asking what we actually budgeted for increases in last year's budget.
Well, that would be relevant, too, but if I look at the incremental, it's seventeen point eight one last year, and there's an ask of sixteen point two three.
That's correct, yep.
This year.
And David, last time, when we met, you were against kind of putting a contingency teacher in there, and it looks like you've changed that.
So again, I received some feedback from, at the last board meeting on the fourth, obviously, Elizabeth and Julie, I did share that, and I think that still stands true. In the past, we've, we've kind of budgeted conservatively, staffed a little bit on the conservative side, and what's happened with some trend data, particularly in staffing at the high school, we've, I've always, you know, when I looked at the history, I've been coming back to you, asking to add sections, and so this particular budget puts that in. And I think it also puts in what I think, where we're going to end up in the, in the elementaries. That said, again, some feedback from the January fourth meeting, particularly from board members, is I wonder, you know, if you can still hold a conserv, a contingency teacher in the, in the event that there's, you know, some pretty significant changes.
Is that, is the thought there mostly around kindergarten?
I think so, again, you know, that's, that's our highest variability currently in our elementary programming. But that said, we may have other areas that may, that may call that out. So I want to be careful, again, with a contingency teacher, because what begins to, you know, happen is that it's a, it's a wait period, it's your ability to hire, you know, qualified candidates into a position starts to erode as, as you do that. So there's going to be, there would, there would need to be some timely decision around what that is looking like. That said, it's also hard to know until you get closer to the start of the year. So that's, that's the rationale, thanks for pointing that out.
Can you talk a little bit, maybe expand a little bit on the things that went from ones to threes between January, what you presented on January fourth to today, just a little bit more context on why you're seeing them as more critical?
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
So some of the things that were, or not some of the things, the items that were added, again, when we took the first pass, again, utilizing the tool, you know, we had not had the opportunity as an entire admin to talk about the things that we were, as much as we wanted. So for one, the pilot program are looking at trauma and behavioral supports. What we know is, again, the trend data to date has been, we've been in a, what I'll say, a reactive response, and we want to get in a place that's better than that. I think we've also, as a result of, when we first started talking about it, we've been in active conversation with individuals from NFI, looking at ways in which we can perhaps mitigate that response. So that's one reason for that one. Similarly, and again, Joanne can talk a little bit to both the other adds, which is in that same learning initiatives block, items twelve and fourteen, the autism and the elementary inclusion support.
Just how it went from a one to a three? It was really discussion among the administrative team about what was most important and necessary to meet the needs of the students that are coming before us, so that's how they moved, the priority moved for those two items.
Again, I think, you know, we're trying to balance what I would say, a response, reactive, to becoming more proactive. I mean, I really feel strongly that, over time, and again, we, Joanne has put some data together for us to, as we, as we looked at this, again, it's hard to say you're going to save a lot of money right out of the gate, you're not. Over time, though, you're going to, one, serve students better, and, two, hopefully mitigate costs in the long term. And that, it does show, it does show that, which is part of the reason why it's back on there, but again, certain things continue to change. So anyway, those are the, those are some of the rationales on that. The elementary robotics, again, I feel like it's an important component around engaging students, that's item twenty-six. Moving down into the academic component, again, triple E, that's also associated to some of the needs that we're seeing, again, triple E is early essential education, how we're responding to the, to our preschool population that are, that are in need. Into the master planning and visioning components, I did move up the, the learning space, moving us out of our spaces, based on, for the past twenty years, and you've heard it loud and clear from the master planning and visioning group, that the high school doesn't have enough spaces now. They, they struggle with learning spaces right now, and we occupy not a lot of square footage, but a good, a good amount with our business office and our IT people. We also occupy a good chunk of space over here, about three thousand square feet over here at the middle school, and that's also important learning space that's been identified, as well as, and I would say, thirdly. As well as, and I would say, thirdly, the ability to coordinate and, and be able to be responsive to the population of whom we, whom we serve. We can do better by uniting ourselves together and looking at efficiencies down the road on, on systems, on copiers, you know, there's a variety of things there. But most importantly, about moving the district forward in a way that supports the work we're trying to do. The district communication coordinator was an ad. It wasn't a full ad, but it was a part-time fifty percent ad. And part of that, I think, connects to also school board work, as well as all of the work we do on a daily basis. But to make sure we're sharing information with our public, I would see this person being very prescribed around sharing positive information on all of our, you know, Chamberlain, Orchard, and Rick Marcot, the high school and the middle school programs, whether they're academic or athletic, and being able to do that through a variety of methodologies, website, you know, Twitter accounts, et cetera. Being a recipient also for people who can feed that information. Again, a big part of what, what, what we know is important is that we need to tell our story. People then wanna be engaged, and that's a helpful and important component to celebrating learning and making sure we stay strong. So, those were, those were the, those were the, the major changes in ads.
Okay.
Was there some discussion, David, about where the admin offices would be centrally?
So, we don't have a location. Of course, when you go out, and, and we don't do this, again, these are things that you become more educated on, around looking at what, what would be the low, middle, and high least space. And so, this amount represents what I would say, not the low, not the high, about the middle. Currently, as you know, Jon Stewart has come back and been helping a little bit, Jon and myself. And currently, he's been out getting some information from realtors that have space in South Burlington that might be available. So, this is, this is a good number. Again, where I get caught sometimes is fit-up costs and things like that. So, this, well, this is a number, this is a big number. It was quite a, quite a shock to me. But that's how it was arrived at, through communication collaboration with, with develop, you know, with brokers, actually. Do I have that name right? Real estate brokers.
Does this budget include money to make the current office spaces back into learning spaces?
So, it does not. The, the money currently would allow for the move. I believe that we have the, the, number one, the, the resources to make a change if we needed to. But ideally, I would like to see these space, just these spaces be able to be repurposed, kind of the way they are, into added student learning spaces. In other words, there could be, you know, you know, kind of the maker space, opportunities, small meeting spaces for students, project-oriented things of that nature. Again, we're not talking a huge amount of space at the high school, but they're also right now, you know, clamoring for, for additional workspaces. So, I would ask them in year one to just kind of make do. And if there are slight modifications, our facilities group would, would be able to do that initial make do. But at the same time, again, one of the areas that we've kept in the budget is that deeper dive on assessing the structural, electrical, mechanical functionality of your, of your facility before you start doing too many, you know, larger-scale changes. So, that's, that's the rationale on that.
Was, was there, I apologize if some of this is redundant from the fourth, but was there discussion about the, kind of the cost-benefit of creating more learning space, but the offset of being out of the facility in terms of supporting staff and, you know, other, other entities, administrators within the existing buildings?
We didn't do an actual cost-benefit analysis, you know, as far as a...
Well, it's, it's more kind of the quality of interaction and things like that.
Yeah, I, I think we, we have, and again, part of the reason that it has elevated to three is that, you know, the learning spaces that we have continued to hear about, particularly with the onset of more personalized learning plans, the need for more spaces, that has taken a higher level of priority than anything that we're currently doing as far as office space. Second, and by, we recognize that we are, you know, again, I think, at least to the folks that sit here, Delina, you know, Joanne, and Stuart, and Jon, we all are kind of, and myself included, we're recipients of people, particularly at the, at the middle school where we reside, and at the high school where Amity, Jon reside, are kind of, you know, at bay for the schools that we're in. We kind of like that. I'm, I think the, the staff like that. But we also recognize that we have to get ourselves around, and we have to make sure that people are aware. So, that's part of our, our ongoing work. I don't think that would change, obviously, for the, for the locations we're not in. We would have to make sure that that strengthens. So, I, I think the other, the, you know, one major component for me has always been, you know, as a district, we don't, we don't have a location where you're a new parent, you're an interested community member coming from afar, you know, you'd like to find out a little bit more information about the school, district. We don't, again, I think we're all friendly and we're all aware of, of our, of our work, but we don't have a great place to welcome people who wanna inquire, who wanna, you know, understand more about the district. And I think that, that's also a really important component around kind of welcoming and informing our, our community. So, again, that's, I wouldn't, that's certainly not the highest priority. Highest priority is kind of student, repurposed spaces for students, high school, middle school, opportunities for us to be more efficient, to better serve the population that we're supposed to. So, again, that's the, that's the rationale there.
Other questions or comments at this point?
I know Diane and Dan have a question.
Oh, thank you. Dan?
Okay. I've been following, been involved in various ways, the district's budget evolution for, I think it's eight years now, various roles. I'm currently a member of the citizens group, but what I'm about to say is my view, doesn't necessarily reflect anybody else's view.
They're right behind you, be careful.
I'm gonna make a few observations and comments. First of all, the process that the administration went through this year is the best process that I've seen in eight years. I don't necessarily agree with the outcome of everything, but the process, I think, is, was a better one and involve, involved a lot more thinking and, and ownership, I think, of what the recommendations are. I'm personally very concerned about this state yield value. On the surface of it, it looks like the state is inviting all the school districts to spend four percent more, and I find that very hard to believe that that's what the legislature really wants. Okay? So, so I worry a lot about that. And I would point out that, that to the extent that doesn't happen, any percent that comes off that goes on to the tax rate. Basically, the way it works. I'm also concerned about the numbers here that are in here. This is more a long-term consideration than what this chart should say we should be concerned. But these percentage increases are the biggest in most of these categories that I've seen in the whole eight years. I've never seen percentage increases, typically, they're half or a third of these numbers. Okay? So, just to give you an idea how much different they are. I really worry about the pro-pupil number at six percent increase. That's a number that, if it gets built into the fabric of the district, is going to, the district's gonna have to live with it. And I'm concerned mostly because I think the state level, and I'm increasingly concerned about where the federal support is gonna come in the next few years, and whether that's gonna, whether this is gonna be, put the district in an area where it's gonna have to start cutting at things that it thought it had found a way to deal with. I also note that with this budget, the way it's proposed here, number seven, inversion seven, the gap between the non-resident and the resident tax rate increases, and you know there's a contingent in the community that is quite concerned about that, that the non-resident part, they feel is being underpaid, or maybe the resident part is being overtaxed, okay? Depending on how you wanna look at it. But just to note, just to note to you that there is a contingency in the community that's quite concerned about that. Now, I wanna talk about some things that I really want you to consider supporting, finding a way to support, given all those concerns. First on my list is, I think that the, what's called the trauma and behavioral thing begs for an alternate way to do it, and the only way that that's gonna happen is through an investment in a pilot of some sort, which I think that's what the words that are used here is. But if the direction of that pilot is to try to find a more effective and more efficient way of using resources, read that as people and money, then I think the board ought to try to find a way to support it at some appropriate level. Secondly, has come, come out of a lot of the master planning stuff, it's really important that the board get some future vision for what the high school and the middle school need. So, I think it's important to try to find a way to do what's called the facilities assessment. The only thing I would suggest is that it be coupled with not just a physical assessment, but also development of a better understanding of what these 21st century learning things really mean in terms of facilities. I would hate it if we found out that there's something we could do in the facility and we decide we're gonna change it, but we don't know why we're doing it. This would, this would be a wrong outcome. And then, finally, there are a number, quite a number of capacity-driven things here, and to the extent that there are actually classroom requirements, they're there, I think the board needs to certainly support that. Whatever, whatever the price for it is, I think that needs to get, needs to get supported. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Dan. Were there other comments?
Hey, Diane, maybe.
I just had a comment about the sixteen point two-three, and that wouldn't necessarily be FTEs added, correct, if we don't use the contingency teacher, number one? And two, the school-based clinicians don't get counted in the FTE amount, right? Or if that's a con, those are contracted positions?
Correct. I mean, we, for transparency purposes, you know, we're, we're showing it that way. And you're right about the contingency, Diane. If we don't use it, it won't add to the FTE. But again, just by being transparent, we're saying what that might, might result in.
And I, I also just wanna echo what Dan said about the pilot program. I think, just in, you know, some of the discussions about, you know, adding the one-to-one assistant isn't really, as kids come in with, with pretty complex behaviors, that's not really dealing or sorting out what's going on and the behavior that's happening. And I think if you can put some investment in a program that will help kind of get to the root of those behaviors and teach kids self-regulation and skills so they can get back into the classroom, and then ultimately not need as many additional people supporting those kids in the classroom, I think that that's a, a really good way to go.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Back to the, David, do you have a...
No, I, I did wanna, you know, I won't respond to all of the, the questions and/or just responses, but, you know, I think, you know, Dan highlighted some of the percentages increases, and I can't disagree with what's factual. I mean, I think, at the same time, when we see, I think Dan's read is right, that the percentages are up. I do wanna call out that I think it's important to note that the revenue is also up. And so, when you look at, you know, again, I know that we've talked about our tuition revenue as a, as a risk slash liability, but it is revenue that comes in, and that certainly is showing that it's up. And so, in comparison to the past years, you know, it's up considerably. I think the other thing is around the calculation. It is the calculation that ends to be the cost per equalized pupil. You know, we in the, for many years, have, have been in, in a, in a different place. And again, we have always, you know, worked to provide a really good service, and I think it's, it's articulate here to say, at least in, in, for my purview, this is, you know, somewhat defendable.
Can you remind me, just a quick question on that issue? The equalized, and I should know this, and I probably do, and I just need to remind you, but the equalized pupil, does that include the tuition students? It does not, right?
No, because revenue is taken out, out, so the calculation is based...
The revenue's out as well.
Right, so that, you see on, on the sheet that's prepared, you see that the twelve-point, you know, you're subtracting the revenue from the total dollars, arriving at the net education spending of the thirty-eight-five-five-nine-seven-eight-seven.
Gotcha.
And then, that's divided by our equalized, our equalized, our, our, our resident students, which arrive at, then the cost per equalized pupil. There's, you can't, in other words, you can't, you know, because we get revenue for the tuition, you can't count them as, as equalized.
Tuition, I wonder if we're asking for the same.
And, and do we know what the average cost per equalized pupil is in Vermont right now?
I, I do not right now. I do not. And again, everybody's kind of in the same place, working on pulling their...
Even last year, yeah.
I did give some statistics on where we...
Just one second, hang on. Okay, go ahead.
So, even if you, one of the difficulties is even if you get that number, the problem is that the structure of the districts is so disparate.
I agree, yeah.
That, you know, if you don't, if you're not comparing a pre-K through twelve school district, then there are awfully few of them in the state.
Yeah, yeah. No, I agree. Sorry, Jon?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I did report some equalized pupil numbers a few weeks ago. I can't, probably not gonna, I'm gonna dig through my pile to find them, but we're down in the middle of the pack somewhere. But there's still the concern that Dan has about what structure you have.
Apple store, just, yeah.
Did we have any carryforward in this budget?
Yes. Five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars worth of carryforward from last year.
And the, I think you called it the push-forward budget, Jon, is that, how, that five percent or five point one-nine percent change in push-forward, how, how does that number compare to the, what we've seen year-over-year on the, on the equivalent push-forward budget in our district?
I'm not gonna be able to weigh in on that. I can tell you that that reflects the seventeen or so additional staff people that we added during the year. It reflects about a five hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of additional special ed, out-of-district tuition expense.
Mm-hmm.
So, there's a, almost, well, almost half of that amount is in those two items.
Okay.
Right, plus the, our stewardship plan, which is at seven...
And the stewardship plan was another...
Seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand or something.
Right. Most of the stewardship plan in the current year was funded with a bond. The items this year are smaller items, and we're proposing to do most of them within the body of the budget. So, there's a...
Yeah.
About a five hundred thousand dollar increase in that source.
Other comments or questions? We, we have this obviously warned for action, and we have it warned for action if we don't do it tonight for our next meeting. Do people have other feedback for David, other observations?
I wanted to reiterate that I thought the process was great in terms of the prioritization and the level of detail. I'm still struggling a little bit at the high level of how much the budget is increasing without significant new programming or new, you know, experiences for the kids. And one thing that I'm disappointed that is not in the budget right now, because it's fallen from a two to a one, and it's never been in here, is, is foreign language. And I think we've talked about that, you know, several times, as being something, an important 21st century skill. I know we talk about STEM and robotics and stuff, but a, a 21st century skill that's gonna be really important for kids is to, to be able to converse with people from other countries. It's just the way the world is going. And it's disappointing to me that that's not in here at all. And I don't know if others have thoughts about that, whether we want to ask that to be raised as a priority. But I would have liked to have seen that in, at the same time, I am concerned about the increase that we have year-on-year. Yeah.
So, I don't, I certainly don't wanna, I wanna quick respond to that. Obviously, you know, it's before you, you can up or down recommendations, similar to what Bridgette has just said. Regarding the, the world language, obviously, it was put on there because it was a pri, it is a priority. I think the complication for us has been around how to roll it out, how to fit it into the schedules, given our, our schedules that we currently have with, with some of the mandates that are on them. And, and then, obviously, the cost, and then the maintaining and doing it developmentally appropriate. And so, it's not, it's not a dead issue. We think it's still an important issue. We think it's one that it will continue to warrant. Again, I think the, at the January fourth meeting, board members gave some feedback around, you know, why would you be starting at the lower grades? Why not, you know, at the, at the four-five, for instance, so that then they would at least be able to go over? And again, what, what we, we provided, actually, Stuart and the world language group, study group, provided three options, and the option that was... provided three options, and the option that was most appropriate developmentally was to start at the younger ages. Again, and it's to start that as soon as possible because that's the time developmentally that's best. And we will continue to study and talk about how we would go about it in the future. Currently, the right way developmentally would be to essentially add two, and that add to the next year, and that to the following year, you know, at least, and that's not necessarily extremely easy because you're going to have two, you got to have two people being able to travel to three, three different locations. So you got complications in schedule. Obviously, you could add a whole lot more than that and make it happen, but we were trying to do it on an appropriate staffing level.
I could just comment on that as well. It's just, I had the same struggle that you did, that if I was setting the priorities, I mean, the language seems really very important, but, you know, we've tasked the administration to come up with a, unless it's glaringly not supported, in my view, I didn't really raise it because, you know, I'm deferring to where they think these resources are most needed. And he's, the administration seems to have given us good rationale for where they're putting these funds. And yet, yes, it's still a pretty big increase, but, you know, where I am at least right now is, you know, I'm disturbed by some of this, but I don't see anything that's obvious that hasn't been supported sufficiently by the administration at this point.
One area that I am concerned about is I feel this facilities question, I feel like it's premature, the move. I feel like from the high school and the middle school, someplace else feels a year premature to me. We have $75,000 in there to do an assessment of what the facilities needs are, and that will include some discussion of what our programming needs are and what we really want to see in the high school and the middle school. And it feels to me like we're jumping the gun on a fairly reasonably sized expense that's going to be a run rate expense, is my understanding. So that doesn't just cover just this year, and we're going to keep seeing that expense in the budget going forward. So that was, that was one that kind of stood out to me that I was concerned about.
Part of the reason why it was initially, you know, out of the gate, not a high, you know, didn't, wasn't a three, but as it's gone around, we have some competing situations that I think, you know, we're trying to pay attention to. Number one, any additional learning spaces would be a benefit, even if they're not programmed perfectly. Anything, so that's kind of the high school, middle school, and anything we can do to become more efficient to support, to support our entity without adding staff or, and looking at ways where we can be more efficient around some of the resources that we have, I think is important. In addition, I think we also have some things that are going to approach us around likely, you know, increased enrollments into the seventh and eighth grade, could be some additions into the, in the year FY '19 and '20 with, under the merger, particular situation with the Three Island Schools. So I hate to try to be in a reactive mode to say, we got to find space, we got to get out of here. So some of this was trying to be somewhat proactive. But, you know, I'm not in a, in a much different place than what you stated. Again, large amount of money. I think the assessment would absolutely, is going to have important information around our systems of our two schools, and I think the committee work that will happen around looking at kind of what is it that you would want, high school, middle school, I think will, that synergy I think is going to be really important.
Yeah, Bridgette, I would concur. I would, I would love to support that this year as well, but I have the same inkling that it's, you know, it's one of those things that it doesn't seem to float to the same level of criticality right now as to some of these other items. And as I was thinking about this, I've, you know, when I, in another part of my world, I review scholarships sometimes, and when you read the scholarships, you want to, you want to give everybody a scholarship. And I feel like some of that is on this, but I think, I am concerned about the percentage of increase as well. I mean, the 7.81 is tough for me to process on that percent increase, so I'm struggling with the increase as much. And you've done a good job justifying these as well, but I still think we need to, I feel like we need to get a little bit finer with our pencil and try to make a few more choices here. So I, that's, you know, I would almost look to you to say, if you had to do one more kind of iteration of less initiatives, what were, you know, the threes, what are the 3.5s versus the threes type thing? I mean, I hate to put that on you, but I do feel like we need a little bit of a lens on one more pass.
Yeah, I would say if that's the will of the board, then I think, you know, I wouldn't want to sit here and try to do that now. It would be something that would be done and, you know, with the support of the administration. I think it's, you know, would be work that we would need to do for you. Again, I'm hearing you on the administrative offices, you know, I heard that from certainly Bridgette and you, Pat. So I'm hearing you again. If that's the direction that the whole board wants to go, then certainly in preparation for the 18th.
If I can go back to, I mean, I, this won't be any surprise, David, but I do go back to utilizing the existing programs as the baseline, and I do think there always has to be a challenge of what are we doing compared to what we could be doing that may have diminished value over time to students or for students. And I have never gotten the sense since I've been on the board that, you know, and you don't have to justify things that might have come off the plate at this stage of the game, but the fact that that's the premise for the baseline, which is going up 2.4 million on spending out of the gate, that coupled with the FTEs, and I look back and I know a lot of the FTEs that were added last year, it was, we're going to add them and reevaluate them, and they're all in the run rate. And Diane, with all due respect, I have not seen a contingency position that existed in a budget that didn't ultimately get utilized in any given budget year. So I think the track record has been, if it's there, it becomes part of your run rate. And based on my calculation of ballpark FTEs, this is about a 10% increase in FTEs year over year, if you include the non-budgeted from last year. And I'd like to see what that trend is, again, compared to enrollment. And those, that wages and benefits represents 80% of our district's kind of fixed costs. So to incorporate that level of spending into our run rate and expect that to be sustainable, and then I do, you know, I am concerned we're becoming more reliant on the revenue associated from tuition students. So I think we have some competing pressures on those revenues, the FTE adds, and then our, then our own aggregate enrollment numbers against what we can reasonably provide. And again, I don't have any, you know, criticism against the specific line item in these budget initiatives. It's really just that 20,000-foot view of sustainability over time. That's a significant increase in FTEs. And hopefully, we could get the five-year run rate on FTEs sort of actual versus budget compared to enrollment. I just worry about that.
Yeah, and I wasn't, I wasn't going to do this as, maybe a good segue. I was at the State House today unveiling the, how Vermont young children's doing. And when you look at this over time, the trend data for every county currently is significant. So when you look at, you know, from poverty to trauma, everything is up. And I think, to your point, Elizabeth, you know, it's, you know, trying to get that handled, I think I overpromise and under-deliver around FTE with a lack of, I think, clarity around the current situation. Number one, I don't think you can decouple FTE, you know, our ability to reduce FTEs and from our current equalized pupils or actual seated pupils or actual tuition kids. And I think we're not a district that's going significantly down. I'm not wanting to say we're going significantly up either. Where others are going significantly down, their run rates on FTEs are going significantly up also. And I think that's, that's part of the issue here, that we're trying, again, through some of our initiatives, whether it's MTSS, our work on, you know, ensuring that classroom instruction is the best possible that it can be, and it's not dependent on additional people. So our universal design programming, I think, is part of that. But, you know, I would love to be able to say, you know, there's an easier ratio to do number of students to an FTE outcome. And I got to tell you, the complication, I think, rests within, you know, within the data that surrounds Vermont young children or Vermont children in our system. It's a lot different than it was. I don't want to say it's completely different, but it's a lot different, and I think we have a lot of the data that helps us that way. So I'm very mindful of your desire to look at the FTE slash enrollment trend, but I think coupled with that will be some really, you know, important data, which I'm going to make this available to all of you folks as well. But, you know, when you look at just, you know, there's a number of categories here that I would say, you know, just that are significantly concerning that play right into that. And again, I think you look at the opiate addiction, the numbers of kids that are coming into us exposed in those areas, you know, is just one, one of the, one of the areas that rise significant concern.
To that end too, David, I would hope that we can, if there's any data that supports the recommendations of administration, I hope they're specific to South Burlington versus generalized in a broad way.
Right.
Because I, you know, this is the budget we have to take to the community, so.
Yeah, and again, this, you know, our additions are not like, hey, because you're getting it, we want it too. And part of this is, you know, I think I could honestly say I could make some reductions, but part of what we're trying to do is also, at the same time, serve, also be proactive. And I think that's what you, that's what you pay us to do, be visionary, to try to be as proactive as we possibly can. But we also know, and you also get calls to say, you know, we need some help here. We need, and we have situations in classrooms that we're in need of. So it's some of that, both intervention slash proactive responses that we're, and again, I think, as I talk to colleagues around the state, I don't think they're in the, anywhere near the proactive places that we are, and part of that may be also resourcing, so I get that.
Do we have a sense of what the city increase is going to be?
We're working on that. I think it's right around two and a quarter, is what I'm hearing. Again, you can't just then two and a quarter, two and a quarter add. It's obviously the, the numbers are different. I don't know, we're in the process of getting that. Both John and John were working on that with the cities folks, coupled with kind of our discussion around the impact. And again, I don't, they're pretty close, I think, to an adoption. I'm talking without knowing exactly where they, I think they had a meeting yesterday and not Monday. I don't know.
So just a part of the discussion you just had, I mean, when I look at the FTEs and such, and just, may I count up how many are there because of, like, well, you have the category-
Yeah.
-mandates. You know, these are, these are things that we have to do that the state level has told us, and they're good things. I mean, preschool, universal pre-K, the flexible pathways and the personalized learning plans. I certainly think we, it's good that we're calling out how much money we're putting towards these unfunded mandates from the state. Not to, not saying anything about whether they're good or not, I think they are actually good, but, except for the unfunded part. And then, and then there's, and then there's six FTEs that I count, unless I'm counting it wrong, that have to do with behavior and special ed issues. And some of them are the proactive, the trauma, the autism support, the inclusion support, the two high school-based clinicians, the EEE interventionists. I think that also counts in that too as well. So, I mean, that's, that's nine and a half, almost, FTEs right there before you get to, you know, these additional classroom teachers. So, I mean, I, it is a struggle, and I, I mean, I've seen the same trend and been frustrated with, along with Elizabeth on this as well, but I think we have to keep on explaining why this is, this is happening and make sure, you know, we're clearly explaining that.
So I had suggested that maybe David take one more pass to see if he could feather out these, the priority threes to, you know, a priority three plus and a priority three. Is that, is the board interested in having David take that task on, or how would you like to proceed next?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
Supportive, okay. So we'll ask David to do that. We will task ourselves with receiving that hopefully before the next meeting, but I know you've got a lot of things you've got to go through, and then at our next meeting, which is next week, we'll be tasked with approving a recommendation.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a lot of turnaround time. I mean, a lot of the stuff is set, so let me do the very best that I can. I think it would be fair to say that I'd like to have it to you before, so you can have it for the, for a portion of the weekend, if at all possible, at the latest Monday. Again, a lot of it's contingent upon administrative regathering, and so that's a little schedule issue.
My gut is, I think the board would rather have you take more time and give us your tasks, work, than get it quickly and-
Yeah.
Feel like you're walking on thin ice.
Thank you for the feedback.
All right. Any other comments from the public on this before we move on to the agenda items? Okay. Let's move on to agenda item nine, School Board Communications Guidelines. I believe this was in your packet. I know Bridgette has sent me a couple of her comments, but I honestly haven't had a chance to really peruse them yet, so I think-
Do I need to walk through them? Or do you, what do you want to, how do you want to handle the discussion?
So let me, let me start by just kind of gauging where we are. Have people had a chance to review these guidelines in a place where they're prepared to at least, if not, at least listen to the comments from other board members? See how I framed that? The only answer you had was yes. Bridgette, go right ahead with your comment.
Yes, yes. I've lost, I've lost-
Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Dan.
One overall question I had for everyone else was, it felt like this was somewhere between a full communications guideline and a social media communications guideline. It felt like we were mixing a little bit of things in there about, you know, and I realized that a lot of the stuff came directly from the open meeting guidelines that we had from the state and were sort of added in at the end, but it sort of started to cover things like Google Docs and how we're communicating with one another, and then part of it, but the main idea I thought was a social media communications. So I guess the question that I had was whether we wanted to make this just social media communications or whether we wanted to broaden it and make it into a more full communications policy.
So I can, I'll tell you, as one person on the board, the, I think we started this with just trying to clarify what our social media policy was, not a broader document.
Yeah.
As any document, as it takes a long time to move, it becomes other things.
Right. I wasn't wedded to either. I just, I just wanted to point it out. It just felt like it was sort of neither here nor there.
Yeah, it's good clarification. Are people, are people comfortable with us moving forward with just, it is a social media guideline that we're trying to write for ourselves, not a broader document?
Yes.
I think it might be smarter to limit it to social media.
Yeah.
Yes.
Confirmed.
All right. So there'll be a couple of changes from that, right?
What's that?
There'll be a couple of changes that are going to have to be made-
Right.
Given that, right?
Yeah.
And then I, we have this paragraph in here that the board, the district does not currently maintain a singular Twitter or Facebook account. I thought we needed to add something in there, and maybe the language isn't quite right, but something in there to talk about the fact that we are not, at this time, we had discussed last March, not committing ourselves to monitoring any of the social media that's sort of developed by the community or other people. What I had in here was in order to avoid giving preferential access to any particular group, because we can't start to, you know, monitor 20 different websites if they all start to pop up, and to allow us to prioritize our core work so that we can focus on, you know, budget and those kinds of things as opposed to monitoring social media. We had determined that we will not regularly monitor or communicate through a social media site established by members of the public, so we can, you know, wordsmith that at some other point. But the idea I thought needed to be in here or some explanation of why we're not agreeing to do that. It's not that we don't want to communicate with the public, we just can't commit ourselves to communicating with every single site that pops up.
So I, I agree with that, what we were trying to come, I think our approach, the way this was drafted, and I'll take accountability for at least part of this, is that the absence of it being spoken to in the what we do do kind of defines that we don't do that. Here's, I think, the app, you know, say, here's what we do. If it's not on this list, then, because otherwise, I think you start, but I think your wording doesn't bother me either, so I think being more clear is fine, but I think that's where we had started.
I like having the wording, because I think there's an implicit expectation that there, there's at least some visibility in, not necessarily an obligation to respond, but an obligation to be aware and- And I don't think we even have that.
Right. It was basically just sort of a lead into the second part that you had in here already, Patrick, of this is how we do communicate. So it just, so maybe it was just a little extra emphasis, but.
What we need to decide is whether we want to take that out, because if this is a social media policy, these are not social media points.
No, I think these, I think I, I would, I would still keep this in, because.
Okay, I'm trying to get everybody on the same page.
Yeah, no, it is so, and, right, it's, it has to be clear, and I think it's somewhat lost on, it's a great Facebook group, I won't disparage it whatsoever, it, it is great, but there cannot be an expectation that that's the communications to the board.
Right.
That, that we're hearing, that, that, it's just, yeah.
Any Facebook group.
Yeah, any Facebook group. There happens to be one that is, you know, is very involved in the community, and there just can't be that expectation. You know, whether we do or not is fine, but, but the expectation can't be there. And I think we should need to spell that out clearly.
Just a couple observations that I had on items two and three. You know, the word avoid, you know, kind of says, well, don't do it all the time, you know, try not to do it. I just wonder if it would be better. I mean, I think you're all, you all know that if, if you see each other on the same page, then it's not like, eh, I should avoid doing that, but it's okay. You know, it could be interpreted by your fellow colleagues to follow that might say, yeah, I just should avoid it.
Do not.
Yeah, I think it should be maybe a little bit stronger in some way.
Yeah, and one I added, and I don't know what you think, we have that we should clarify that we communicate as an individual member of the school board or as a private individual, because there might be cases where we're just not talking as a board member at all, that you're talking as a parent or you're talking as some other member of the community. It's hard to separate that.
It's really hard to separate that, especially for the public, I think.
It is, it is. But I think for, there are city council members, for example, who I think do a reasonable job of that when they're talking about something that's not core city council business, but they've been pretty good about saying, just as a, you know, this is what, you know, in my hopes and dreams, I would love to see for our city. This is not on our agenda right now, you know, and I'm just saying this as a private individual, but.
Yeah, I don't have any concerns with you, with your addition there. So the item four, just, oh, you can go ahead and, you want to come to the change you made to item four?
No, it's okay, go ahead.
So item four currently says, I think, avoid posting content that indicates that you've already informed an opinion on pending matters. And now it says, unless that opinion has already been stated in a public meeting.
This one came to mind as, with respect to master planning and visioning. For example, there was a lot of sort of request for, you know, clarification of our statements, you know, after we had made very public statements, clearly stating, you know, this is where I stand on this issue. And I felt, because we hadn't really talked about this communication policy, that I couldn't really comment at all, you know, on, on what we were talking about, which I don't think, yeah.
Yeah.
It just felt like it tied our hands unnecessarily. If it's been already stated in a public meeting and people sort of know where you stand, I don't really see the harm, as long as you're following all the other parts of the communication policy and sort of restating that opinion or clarifying.
If I recall, I think this one was kind of formed out of, if the board hasn't already discussed it and you haven't heard all the facts, avoid offering an opinion. I think it was the spirit of that.
Yeah.
But even if you, even, I don't know, I'm mixed about this, because even if you do, even if you have had a public statement about it, and then you go on the social media and start, like, discussing the issues and your opinion, you're really, I don't know, I feel like you're opening yourself up to, and the whole board up to more interpretation. I don't know.
Well, if you're doing it as an individual, or go back to number one, you're clarifying you're doing as an individual member of the school board, and you're, you're clarifying your opinion or, or even advocating that you think this is the right, even though everyone doesn't agree.
Well, you're only a school board member in the boardroom. You're not, and that's what, you know, if you go to school board training at the state level, that's what they tell you. So you're really.
Well, that's not entirely true, because you have some duty of loyalty to the school board even when you're not here. And that means that if a decision has been made, you don't go on social media and start haranguing about the decision. In fact, that's something we need to, I think, add to here, that.
Please spell haranguing.
Well, so I, let me ask you a question about that.
I like that. I've got another word, but I can't put that one in the document.
Yeah, so does that also mean that you can't, once a decision's been made, you can't go on and disagree with it? Even as, I mean, how's that work? Because I see there's a lot of little nuances to this.
You're saying if a decision was made by the board, you, you know, you then can't go back out and say, why, you know?
Yeah, I wouldn't support that.
You may have already known, but it was the consensus of the board through Robert's rules that it was passed.
So I'll give you an example.
Yeah.
Say the board, through many deliberations, comes to a position on Act 46. And then you, as a board member, send out a letter and communicate with districts, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm making this sound too much like another situation, with other community members to really say that this was stupid and, and the board members are corroborating with the bad guys and doing all sorts of, you know, that you shouldn't be doing.
Right.
I mean, it's different to express, you know, this is something I didn't agree with, but, but if you're, if essentially you're kind of undermining what the board is doing, that's violating the.
Well, if a decision's been made by the board and you're, yeah, I agree that it's.
What are you saying is violating?
Well, there's a, there's some duty or some obligation of loyalty to, you know, once a decision has been made, I mean, you can try to revisit.
To support it, yeah. And basically.
Especially or in some kind of?
No, that's, that's in our, in our rules of conduct.
Yeah, it's in our ethic rules.
All right. We're trying to get to the.
And actually, that might be good to refer to in here, that the board is governed by these, this code of conduct, and deliberations occur as a board and, you know, actions are taken as a board.
Yeah, I mean, once the decision's made, as a board member, you can certainly try to get it changed, as I've done in certain issues that keep coming up. But you can't be, you know, rabble-rousing, I'll put that in there as well, out there, you know, attacking.
No rabble-rousing or haranguing.
Or haranguing, no haranguing or rabble-rousing.
Can you put a here, too, for, or there?
This is, this is my legal, you know, speak right here, yes.
So in that regard, that somebody in the, let's just say is watching, hears that you or maybe one or two of you that voted against or did not support, it's likely your public will say, well, hey, I want to ask them further questions to, to those two members. And in so communicating, you certainly are appropriate to say, this is how, this is why I voted the way I did. I honor the process by which the board approved. It was, it passed because it was majority, but this is the way I did that. And they might say to you, thank you very much, and then they might come back and share with the, with the whole board again.
Yep.
That's fine.
Yeah, it's not a black and white thing.
That's fine. Where it's not okay is to say, we have a board, we have a, you know, something coming up, or I want you to come in, you know, speak, I want you to come and activate, you know. That, that, that changes the tenor of, of the issue. And that's, I think, gets back to what Elizabeth's saying, it's kind of the, the code of conduct, if you will, that.
But in that code of conduct, the role of a board member is to deliberate an issue to the point where it goes to a motion.
That's right.
And if, even if you're in the minority with a vote, your obligation, after you've actively participated in deliberations, is to support the decision of the board.
Right.
Right.
Which I don't think means.
Right.
Change your opinion.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll find a way to craft something without using the word harangue, and I'll connect to the code of conduct.
Look at the ethics rule for, for the appropriate language.
So are you going to change both avoids on two and four?
Yeah, there's a couple others that we've, now that we'll fix those all up.
I do think it's a good idea to pull out that code of conduct.
Okay. Bridget, you had a few more comments you wanted.
Yeah, and then after six, which was about attempting to restate what happens in a board meeting, I added a seven. And this, again, comes back to, this kind of came out of master planning and visioning, where I felt pressure, which I did not then to, but to attempt to interpret or clarify other board members' opinions or district employees' opinions or ideas. And I just wanted it stated in our policy that we just can't do that, so that, you know, we can sort of go back to that, because there's a lot of pressure. What did so-and-so mean by what they said in the meeting? You just sort of have to say, go talk to them.
I felt pressure to clarify my own position.
Well, that you could.
Not if I hadn't stated it publicly or in deliberations.
And number eight, I, I took out avoid posting information that's not been verified and made public by the district, because I thought we had that in another one. It just felt repetitive with another one that we had. And now I'm missing where that was.
I'll have to see that.
Oh, post only content that the district has already released to the public. So maybe that one, I just felt like it was repetitive.
Number five.
Yeah, there was just, it wasn't really substantive change. And then number 11 I added was discuss with other school board members their membership or intent to join a social media forum that discusses district-related matters, so that we can avoid membership by a quorum in any social media group, just because it, it was my understanding from the additional information you sent, Patrick, that we just can't do that. And we've talked a lot about that, but my understanding is a quorum of us can't be a member. And so we just need to, before any of us joins, or, or even if, I guess, we're coming off of, you know, and someone else wants to join, we just need to sort of be open with each other about which ones we're members of and which ones we're monitoring or not monitoring, so that we avoid having a quorum of school board members on a specific group.
Yeah, we need to put, well, yeah.
It's hard to do, right?
Yeah, that one, as far as, as far as, as long as you're not communicating, everybody should be allowed. I know that, that the communication from the Secretary of State's office suggests there's some possible. Yeah, but hopefully that it's clarified this year, or next.
So are you suggesting you don't want to add that? As Bridget just suggested?
It could be made milder. I mean, it could just be made that we should, I mean, as a board, we probably should just be open with one another about what things we're monitoring and what we're not monitoring.
Yeah, I think we should just make clear, or just have the statement that we can't have a, can't act as a quorum online. And acting, right now, maybe there's some ambiguity whether acting as a quorum means even being on and participating and listening. Certainly acting as a quorum would be communicating to each other directly. That might be vague enough, but also give it more generality, so that if things change in the next couple of years.
Okay. Oh, I'll take Bridget's suggestion and maybe adjust it a little bit.
I have one last thing for that as well, and maybe this is not necessary, but the district's current communication practices include, and there are three bullet points, in whether you want to make those parallel, as far as the, you know, posting of meeting minutes, accepting and responding to school board group, posting RET and meeting.
What do you mean by making them parallel?
As if it's like a list, and you want to have parallel grammar there.
Oh, you mean one, one, two, three?
Grammar issue.
Yeah, just a grammar issue. But you can.
Okay.
I don't know if it's completely necessary to have the parallel when you're having bullet points, though, but I kind of think so.
Okay. Bridget, you had a few more?
They were tiny ones. The last two sections where we talk about the following are all examples of public meetings in Vermont. It just, I just thought we needed to add a few words to clarify that we need to avoid public meetings under Vermont law, because it's a violation.
Right.
So I just added a little language into each of those two.
Yep.
And the rest of it was just cleanup of nits and formatting and.
And I may do the same thing on those, because you've got it in language like should be.
I don't think this should be in there.
I don't know that we need examples.
This is just totally confusing, and I.
Oh, those last two sections just remove both?
Yeah, I just, I, do we need examples of, you know what I mean? If we're stating all these things, do we need like, I don't think we need examples in there.
No, I don't think you need examples. It's, it's part of the policy. I don't think we usually have examples of the policy.
I'm, I'm fine either way. I think this was a way to kind of help, especially for new board members coming on, a little context for how this actually works.
Well, yeah, and that's something separate.
That could be in a little side letter.
Well, another document.
I think there needs to be a little packet.
I'm not doing, I'm not doing, I'm not doing the other document, so.
No, no, it's not necessary. But I mean, if it's part of the training for new board members.
Drop these, drop these two off?
I'm fine with those two.
I mean, the VSB should be providing social media training for new board members. That should be part of their package. I will.
I'll let you take that up with somebody else.
Suggest that to them, yes.
Any other comments on this document or on communications? So I will, I will make the adjustments based on Bridget's comments that I already have and send it back out through Delina, back to everybody, and we'll have to come back to that one.
And my grammar changes if you decide that.
We'll think about maybe your grammar changes. I'm going to see if I can find a way to put notwithstanding in here somewhere.
I moved with Jordan.
I have.
Are we not there yet?
Go ahead. I was just giving you a hard time. I have a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Almost in there.
Hi.